You're gonna do just fine, don't worry. Don't be nervous. You'll never forget.
Recording in progress.
That's what Jay said.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 3rd meeting of the Chicopee School Committee.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now live broadcasting and recording this meeting for future broadcasts. Is anyone else recording the meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to announcements of participants joining us remotely. We have David Barcello, who is joining us remotely. David, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you, David. Anyone else joining us remotely? Seeing none, I know that our vice chair, Susan Lopes, had told me that she would not be available for the meeting today. I believe that also Sandra Perret is unavailable for the meeting today as well. At this time, I'd like to call for a moment of silence, and we'll observe that for all those in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Can we please have a roll call for attendance?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Lopes? Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Barcello? Mr. Dout?
Here.
Mrs. Perret? Mrs. Scofield?
Here.
Ms. Rousseau?
Here.
Ten present, two absent.
Thank you. I'd like to call, just recognize, we have two new members joining us in the school committee. Sonny Brooks, thank you for running for and winning election. We're excited to have you aboard. And Deanna Rousseau, Deanna, welcome to the school committee. We're excited to have you as well. At this time, we'd like to start our election of officers. It's a new term, and we'll, we have to elect a vice chair and a representative of city government. And we'll start with the vice chair looking for nominations. Check, can I have a nomination?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Don Lamoth.
We have Don Lamoth as a nominee, nomination for vice chair, correct?
Yes.
Any other nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to make a motion, mayor, to close the nominations for vice chair.
No, I actually need to make a motion to open nominations, did I? Do we have to do a roll call?
No, you don't, you don't need to, you, you, no, you just accepted a motion, that's fine. Yep.
So we have the motion is to close nominations, we have to roll call that. We'll take a roll call vote for that.
One moment. Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries, so now we'll actually take the vote for our vice chair. Vice chair, we have one nomination, Don Lamoth, and we will take a roll call vote.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Don, you're now the vice chair of the Chicopee School Committee.
Thank you.
So we're gonna open up nominations for the representative to city government. Could I have a nomination, Don Lamoth?
I would like to nominate Sandra Perret. She asked me to do that because she wouldn't be here, she's on vacation.
So we have one nomination for Sandra Perret. Any other nominations? Seeing none, take a motion to close nominations? Can someone make that motion?
Motion to close nominations.
We have a motion to close nominations, and we will take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Rousseau? Ms. Rousseau, sorry, sorry, Deanna.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries, so we have one nomination for representative to city government to support that nomination, that is Sandra Perret. We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations to Sandra Perret. She is now the representative, continues to be our representative of the city government. So we have public announcements by committee members, and I'll start with our new vice chair, Don Lamoth.
I'd like to welcome the two new members aboard, and if you have any questions, feel free to call.
Thank you, Grace.
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy new year and look forward to the excitement of a new year.
Thank you, Sonny.
I would just like to thank the voters of Ward 6 for the trust in me, and to all the students and staff. Remember, we can't change yesterday, and we can't predict tomorrow, so let's have a great day today.
Thank you, and Chet?
No, no comments.
And Doug?
Thank you, mayor. I too would like to welcome our two newest board members here. Congratulations, and I'd like to wish all the people in the audience and those watching at home, our students and our staff, a happy new year. And as the year goes on, let's put in a real good effort, June is coming, so let's work hard and do the best we can for the, for the students, thank you.
Thank you, and Deanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to formally introduce myself. So I'm Deanna Rousseau McCalliff, newly elected Ward 1 school committee member, very proud product of the Chicopee Public School Systems, which gave me great professional success, that I'm both a certified public accountant and fraud examiner, and I'm ready to bring those skills to this, to this board now here. So I'm very excited to partner with everyone here on the school committee and keep the school system and city moving forward. Excited to grow personally and professionally with this opportunity, and committed to collaborate with the school committee to help navigate the opportunities and challenges we might see in this next term. With that, I do want to be fully reachable for anyone in Ward 1, so they are updating our contact information on the Chicopee Public Schools website, so feel free to reach out to me if I can help with anything, and happy new year and excited to work with and for the city of Chicopee.
Thank you, Jay.
I also just want to welcome our two new members to the school committee. It's a very exciting thing to be a part of, as I'm sure you guys are aware of, and, you know, it'll be a great experience for you and for us, and just wanted to wish a happy new year to all our staff, students, and the viewing public. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, mayor. As my other colleague said, I also want to welcome our two new members, Sonny Brooks and Deanna Rousseau. And Sonny and I worked many years together in the school department, and Deanna Rousseau is making me feel old. She was one of my students back in elementary school, back in the day, so thank you for making me feel old, but welcome. I do also want to thank Keith Mailot and his gentleman ally, I don't know his last name, I apologize, for making myself and Mary Beth Costello from our city council aware of the very dangerous situation up on New Lolo Road. Mary Beth and myself met with Keith and some other constituents, but there were several times to observe and discuss some of the possible solutions to the issues there on New Lolo Road. I also want to thank Mr. Mailot for speaking here in front of our school committee, also I think he spoke in front of city council, I think, mayor, the week before also, voicing his and many constituents in Ward 9 about their concerns in that area. I also want to thank Shelley from Transportation and Joe from our school bus company for working with me to create a solution to this issue by adding two new bus stops on the north side of New Lolo Road, so that for, therefore the students don't have to cross New Lolo Road anymore to get to the bus stop, they can get picked up right there, because that's a very increasingly busy and dangerous area right there on New Lolo Road. And as we know, the students' safety should always be our ultimate concern and priority, so thank you all.
Thank you, and David?
I'm all set, mayor.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to wish everyone a happy, healthy, prosperous new year, looking forward to working with all of you and our superintendent, Dr. Marcus Ware. On that note, superintendent, public announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, school committee. Good evening, Mrs. Rousseau McCalliff, and good evening, Mr. Brooks. Looking forward to working with you, and just happy new year to everyone at home and as well as here in the school committee.
Public input. We have no one signed up for public input, so we'll move on to our visitors. We have the Student Advisory Council. Welcome to City Hall.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor View, Superintendent Ware, esteemed members of the school committee and respected schools administration. I'm here tonight with other members of the Student Advisory Council, Caitlin Jinko, and our advisors, Dr. Petrikowski, Mr. Bouye, and Mr. Evans. We stand before you today as members of the Student Advisory Council to propose a meaningful initiative that not only enriches the lives of our students, but also strengthens the bond between our school and the community we serve. We propose the establishment of the Chicopee Seal of Community Service for Graduating Seniors Transcripts, which would be similar to the Seal of Biliteracy we currently award to qualified students. This would be an honor to, or this would be an honor bestowed upon graduating seniors who not only meet a minimum community service requirement, but also actively seeks and earns the recognition through their dedication to service. This initiative holds numerous benefits for both our students and the community at large. It has the potential to instill in our students a sense of civic responsibility and empathy, fostering qualities that extend beyond the classroom. By setting a minimum community service requirement for eligibility, we encourage students to actively engage with the community, becoming responsible and compassionate citizens. We propose, we propose that the Chicopee Seal of Community Service only be granted to those who actively pursue and earn it. This stipulation ensures that the honor remains a voluntary and earned distinction, reserved for those who are genuinely committed to making a positive impact in their community, which aligns, which aligns with our high schools' missions and vision of the graduate. Additionally, we believe that the participation in community service helps one build self-confidence and self-esteem and a more fulfilling life.
For our graduating seniors who have actively pursued and earned the Chicopee Seal of Community Service, we hope that this would serve as a tangible recognition of their dedication and contributions to the community. This honor becomes a mark of distinction on their academic and personal achievements that could be awarded to students in the fall of their senior year, which would provide them with a competitive edge in college applications and future endeavors. Moreover, it instills a sense of pride and accomplishment, motivating them to continue making positive impacts in their communities as they move forward in life. In terms of community benefits, this initiative creates a ripple effect of goodwill. Students engaged in community service contribute to the betterment of local organizations, charities, and individuals. Whether through volunteering at food banks, participating in environmental cleanup initiatives, or mentoring younger students and athletes, our graduates become active agents of positive change within Chicopee. The types of community service encompass a broad spectrum, ensuring that students can choose activities aligned with their interests and skills. Service options might include tutoring programs, assisting local nonprofits like Lorraine's Soup Kitchen and the Chicopee Boys and Girls Club, participating in neighborhood cleanup events, or engaging in other programs that address specific community needs. This diversity allows students to find a cause that they can connect personally. The Chicopee Seal of Community Service is not merely an accolade, it is a testament to our commitment to producing well-rounded, socially conscious individuals who are poised to make a difference in the world. We hope that the school committee and the administration consider this proposal, recognizing the profound impact it can have on our students and the community we proudly serve. Together, we can make this step towards fostering a culture of compassion, responsibility, and community engagement within our educational institution. If you are supportive of this initiative, we would like to work with our advisors to draft a list of requirements for a student to earn the Chicopee Seal of Community Service. Thank you for your attention and time this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm all about a clean city, so this is a fantastic idea. Don Lamoth?
Yes, I'm interested, and I was gonna ask you that question that you had at the end. Have you thought about the guidelines of what you'd have to do to earn the seal? And the second part of that question is, have you looked at the National Honor Society to see how it would differ? And if you haven't, that's fine, but just so that you, you do that at least.
Yes, we have looked at the National Honor Society, like the guidelines and requirements for them to earn their, like, court at the end when they graduate. It would be a little bit different, but National Honor Society could still use their community service hours towards their, their seal, Chicopee seal.
Thank you.
Sure, Jay.
Yeah, I just want to thank both of you for coming and speaking about this. Both of you spoke very eloquently, and I just want to say that I personally feel now more than ever, there's just a need to stress both service and really community, when we think about our society and where things are heading, I think, to have two of our, the youth from our city come in and talk so passionately about this. Certainly, we need the details and the guidelines of it, but, you know, personally, I can't think of a better idea, so thank you both for coming and speaking to it, and for, you know, really having the best interest of not just the youth, but the city moving forward, having that best interest in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, 24-1-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on December 20th, 2023 be approved.
Don?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. Reports, 24-1-2.
Report on personnel action taken, and I'll present for Ms. Perret in her absence tonight, as well as Ms. Green, as she's not able to attend. With the personnel report, I'd like to start with that since the last meeting on December 20th, we have had a few appointments, more specifically, three appointments. We've had four resignations and one retirement, which, which is Mr. Melvin Sasser, the PET Chair at Chicopee High School. And now I would like to read information about Mr. Sasser. Mr. Sasser was a, was a 1984 graduate of Chicopee High School. Mr. Sasser has been teaching physical education for 34 years. He also started coaching baseball and football before he even started teaching in 1990. Mr. Sasser has coached baseball, softball, as well as football at Chicopee High for his entire teaching career. He's an excellent teacher who has awarded one of our Green, Greenspoon Awards in the past. He has dedicated his entire profession to the children of Chicopee, and has been an excellent role model for our students, both in the classroom and on the field. His passion for teaching and dedication to our students will be missed. Mr. Lemke specifically states, "I am glad Mr. Sasser has decided to continue to coach softball in the spring. Thank you from the bottom of his heart. Thank you, Mr. Sasser, for your service."
Thank you, any other discussion? Sure, Dave, Doug?
Thank you. I'd just like to recognize Butch, I've known him for many, many years, and he is a true example of a Chicopee guy that, that just does so much for the community and for the kids, both in the classroom and on the field. He is well-deserved of this retirement, and I want to wish him many, many years of happiness in his retirement. Thank you, Butch.
Thank you, any other discussion? Well, I grew up with Melvin Sasser, and he is a Boys and Girls Club kid, and he was also a friend and a coworker. Back then, he did like to be called Butch, now he likes to be called Melvin. If you're watching, Melvin, I want to wish you the best in your retirement. He was always involved with kids, mentoring, coaching, and really making a difference in our community, so thank you for your commitment to not just the city of Chicopee, not just the school district, but for what you've done for so many, and I know you've touched many lives, so I wish you the best. Thank you, any other comments?
And if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I know Ms. Perret usually reads out to the public just some of the professional development opportunities that are going on in the community, and so in the packet also, there's multiple day conferences coming up for many of our central office employees, the Attixa Winter Symposium, a lot of central office employees will be going to that, Future of Educational Technology Conference, as well as the School Nutrition Industry Conference. January 12th, in which we will have PD offerings from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m., in which have several offerings spanning the use of Panorama and the IST processes for many of our staff at the respective schools, as well as supporting students with specific learning disabilities and emotional regulation, and as well as working with our students with ASD. So, just wanted to read a little bit about that, as I know she usually takes that position.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? We'll move on to unfinished business. It's 24-1-3.
Move that the School Committee dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee Committee and form the following subcommittees no later than the third School Committee meeting in 2024: Finance Subcommittee, Facility Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, and Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to dissolve and form? How's that? Dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Inform the following?
Can we have discussion on that?
Yeah, of course, after you make a motion. You make a motion.
Motion, move that the School Committee dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee and form the following subcommittees no later than the third School Committee meeting.
Thank you. On the motion, discussion. Don.
Yes, I realize that this had been a controversial move at the last meeting, and one of our school committee members who's not here this evening was adamantly opposed to it. We have had some curriculum subcommittees where we hashed out problems like reach and whether we're going to start a HVAC or something along those lines. My feeling is, is you could put it into a curriculum evaluation Subcommittee. Basically, you just rename the committee and put both together. For the amount of times that we really do the curriculum, you wouldn't be dissolving it, but you'd be just basically combining them.
I'm sorry, Don, a little confused. You mean combine the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee?
What the curriculum and call it curriculum and superintendent evaluation.
I don't think, just my personal opinion doesn't seem to make much sense to do that. They're two separate, completely different entities, but I'm only one vote. So, we have a motion to approve, I'm sorry, a motion to dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee and form the Finance, Facilities, Policy, and Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittees. That's the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Grace.
Yes, I also agree with Mr. Lamoth and a member that we discussed earlier, a member that's not here today. With regard to dissolving the committee, I don't feel the need to at this point, only because there have been instances where curriculum has, issues have come up, such as, one of the particular ones is the Reach Committee, you know, Reach. When the Reach program was in question, that was, you know, like, brought forth and able to. I thought that in the preschool, as a curriculum part of the CTE program was another issue that was brought before the Curriculum Committee. And so, I feel that whereas it might not be needed to be dissolved, but we could, you know, limit that, just have it in existence for as upon needed, not dissolving it and keeping it separate from the Superintendent Evaluation.
Jay.
You know, looking at the motion, you know, that we would dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee and form the following subcommittees no later than the third School Committee meeting, and understanding Ms. Lopes' strong stance on it, I'd like to make a motion to postpone until next, two weeks from now. Hopefully, Ms. Lopes is available and able to kind of, you know, talk about her points as to why she feels, you know, so adamantly that it shouldn't be postponed. We have the time. It's written, you know, in here that we have that time. We have to make a decision by the first or second week of February, so I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
Sure. Just a point of information from our attorney.
So, the way that the committees are formed at that meeting, and this is per the policy B9, the School Committee policy, subcommittees, subcommittee assignments will be made and organizational meetings will be held at a meeting not later than the third meeting of the School Committee. That means that we would have to form those subcommittees at the third meeting. This is our second meeting. So, in order to do that, what we do is we send a poll to you. The Vice Chair solicits from the sitting members, "Which committees would you like to be on?" And we send you a list, and you send back your top choices. Then the Vice Chair fills the committees, provides that information to the mayor, and in accordance with the policy, the mayor appoints with the approval of the Subcommittee, with the School Committee, I'm sorry, the mayor appoints with the approval of the School Committee at that third meeting in January. So, we don't really have time, according to your policy, to do that.
This is our first meeting.
Oh, this is your first meeting? Sorry. We do have time to do that, then.
That's our first meeting. Yeah, we just started today.
Okay.
Right, we were sworn in.
Well, this is the second meeting we've discussed this issue, so that's why I was counting it as twice.
And if it's the will of the committee, we could break this up into two votes. One, a vote to dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee. They can break that out, and then we can also take a vote to form the other committees. I think that we're all in favor of moving forward.
Point of information, Becky, it states that the subcommittees will be formed no later than the third School Committee meeting in 2024. So, with it stated that way, would this count as the first meeting in 2024?
Yes.
So, we still have two meetings?
You do, yes.
Okay.
I was doing exactly that. I was counting the fact that we had discussed this previously, and I'm like, oh, that's twice. But no, this is January 3rd. We haven't met yet until today.
So, we can act now on your motion, then? We have a motion to postpone. Any other discussion? And the other thing to keep in mind, too, is we really want to create a negotiation Subcommittee, a formal one. So, we've had informal negotiations when it comes to collective bargaining in the past. I think we should have a formal Subcommittee that does, thank you, Becky, negotiates with our unions.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry to jump in, but your policy does not, you can have as many subcommittees as you want.
Right.
So, it's completely your decision as to what subcommittees you would like, but they have to be formed by you. And so, you know, if you want to have, you can have as many as you want, there's no limit. There's also no requirement that you have certain subcommittees in your policy. The typical guidance from the Mass Association of School Committees is to focus on, you know, whatever the items are before you. You always need budget, you always need policy, you always need superintendent. Those are your big three jobs. If you're in a negotiation cycle, a negotiation Subcommittee makes sense, et cetera. So, that's kind of the policy and the advice from the Mass Association of School Committees.
And just a point of information for the viewing audience, the reason why we'd even be considering dissolving the Curriculum Subcommittee is because curriculum is not within our purview as members of the School Committee. So, I just wanted to be clear for the viewing audience and for the other members of the School Committee. It may have existed in the past. It doesn't mean that it should have been a committee. Or in today's world, that committee, a lot of communities have dissolved it or don't have it. So, just wanted to bring that up as a point of information. It does not mean that we have to dissolve it. If we, if someone would like to make a motion to just vote on that tonight, or we can do Or we could go with the original motion, which is to postpone everything to next meeting.
Can I amend the motion?
Yes, you can amend your motion.
Can I, can we vote on, can we move that we form the subcommittees? So, we can vote to form subcommittees and then vote separately on the Curriculum Committee?
Yes. So, we have a motion right now, so we want to take the vote on the dissolving of the Curriculum Subcommittee in its own entity?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to dissolve the Curriculum Subcommittee. Any further discussion? We'll do that first. Are you comfortable with your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Jay.
So, just to be clear, we're voting on whether or not to dissolve the Subcommittee?
Yes.
Not, not on whether or not to postpone that decision?
Her motion was made prior to, so we're going to take hers first?
I think that Ms. Schofield's amending her original motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
She's amending her original motion to bifurcate the vote and wants to vote first on the dissolution of the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Which is before the post.
And then, secondly.
It's an amendment of the original motion. Thank you, Becky. So, a yes vote would be a vote in favor of dissolving the Curriculum Subcommittee. A no vote would support creating one. Everyone clear? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
No vote is not to dissolve?
Correct, no.
No.
Mr. Gerard?
No.
Mr. Bernard?
No.
No.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Barcello?
No.
Mr. Dowd?
Abstain.
Mrs. Schofield?
No.
Ms. Rousseau?
No.
Nine no.
Motion is defeated. So, now the second motion is to form the following subcommittees?
Yes.
Curriculum.
Can we add curriculum to that?
Yes.
So, motion to form the following subcommittees would be Finance Subcommittee, Facility Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, Curriculum Subcommittee, and Negotiation Subcommittee.
Any discussion? Don.
On the motion for, is the size of the Subcommittee set with this vote, or do we determine that later?
It cannot be a quorum, because that would be a violation of open meeting law. So, it has to be.
I would like to recommend that the Negotiation Subcommittee be three. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, why don't we form them tonight, and then we can get into the specifics as we evolve. Doug.
I just want to make sure it's okay to talk about the Negotiation Subcommittee, because it's not on the agenda for this evening. I don't know if that's something that we're allowed to do.
It's a great question, and I've already asked the attorney about this earlier today, and we discussed that because it talks about the formation of subcommittees, that it would be okay to add one. Okay. We could add another one if you'd like, but I do think it's appropriate to add a formal Negotiation Subcommittee. Anyone? We could vote on them individually if someone's not comfortable. If the consensus is to move forward with forming all of them, we could take that vote. All right, we'll take a roll call for formation of the subcommittees as defined by Grace Schofield.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Survey for interest.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. So, you will be contacted, and we will be asking for your interest in serving on those subcommittees. And it'll run through Vice Chair Don Lamoth. Don will make those recommendations to me, and then we'll bring them forward in formulation of these subcommittees. Correct? Asking for your interest.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. New business, 24-1-4.
Move that the bills warrant S. 122223 totaling $311,084.70 be approved.
Sunny, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, and Jay, could you please read the warrants into the official record?
Absolutely. So, tonight, we'll be voting on two warrants. I will read the totals of the two warrants combined into the record, and then we will vote on them individually. For athletics, $9,805. Food services, $184,660. General expenses, $113,788. Maintenance, $521,743. Special education, $4,200. Transportation, $783,119. Telecommunications, $2,179. Reimbursements, $31, for a grand total of $2,054,780.
Thank you, Jay. Just for clarity, we'll be voting on the first warrant. That's S. 1222223. I think that was right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. 21-24-1-5.
Move that the bills warrant S. 122923 totaling $1,743,696.20 be approved.
Check. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion on the second warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Ms. Rousseau?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. 24-1-6.
Move that the transportation personnel liaison job description be approved.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the job description for the transportation personnel liaison. Any discussion? Dr. Ware.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let the School Committee know this is a new position, meaning it was not budgeted for last year. It's actually a position that I feel strongly that we need to create because of the activity that goes on in the Transportation Department, specifically in the morning hours, 5:00 a.m., which is way early, but it's the requirement, given that buses start moving at that time. So, there's a need to actually have someone work with our monitors, our buses, and things that go on in those early morning hours. More specifically, in the past, our past Transportation Director actually was paid an extra stipend to do this role. So, analyzing some of the particulars to the job, and also acknowledging in the budget, we have an office assistant position that we did not fill. It was actually, it was, it made better sense to actually create help for the Transportation Department, which is run currently by Shelley Delacquailla, that the transportation liaison would liaise between the Transportation Office, as well as Special Education, which requires a lot of needs in the morning as well for our services for our students. So, this job description that sits before you is more specifically to liaise between those two departments.
Thank you. Grace.
I just had a question about the timing of it, like, five?
I just had a question about the timing of it, like, five A M. to one P M. Like, I know there have been times, I thought one was kind of early to end, where there are times, like, if, at school, where kids were, you know, missing buses, or buses had to be brought back to school for, there have been circumstances. So, I was like, why end at one and not two thirty-eight?
It's really to offset the schedule of the transportation director. So, um, so that, it looks like they end at one, so they will, but Shelley will be present, so she would actually pick that up along with, um, the other assistants in the office. So, that's a good question, but I can understand why it looks that way.
Thanks.
Sure. Don first.
Yes, is there a salary they're going to be assigned to this task, or is that still being negotiated?
That's still been negotiated.
Okay. And Sunny?
Now, this position is being paid for through a position that has not been filled.
Mm-hmm.
And next year, are we going to budget for that, or is this going to be looking to another position unfilled?
Correct. So, no, it would be budgeted for, so that would actually, um, so the current position, which was office assistant, so looking at the amount that was budgeted for that, as well as the stipend that we've paid for the past, I'm going to do the meshing together and then actually present that number to you all. So, it will be budgeted for next year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And for clarity, one position would be eliminated, which is an office personnel.
Correct. It'll be fused together.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion to approve. We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?[1713.83]